I'd like to call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order for March 18th, 2014. At this time, I'd like to ask Eric, and I apologize, Eric, I cannot pronounce your last name correctly, if you would please?
Ekong.
Ekong, to the podium.
To bow our heads, merciful Father, we ask you in this evening to be with all of our commissioners, all that sit here. We ask you to give them the wisdom of Solomon, the ability to make decisions that benefit Jackson County. We ask you to remove any stress that is on their lives and as they work in this capacity. We ask that you bless all decision-making, that we thank you, Lord, for their leadership. We thank you for putting them in this place of leadership. Merciful Father, we thank you for the men and women who serve us here in this county and those that serve us overseas. We ask that you protect our sons and daughters who serve overseas, especially the 50 Marines who have been deployed to Manama, Baharim, learning all these things. We ask you just to provide freedom of stress, self-control, grace, love, and mercy through it all. In all these things, we ask, in your Son's name, Jesus Christ.
Hannah, Jonathan, Haley, Jocelyn, and Gillian, would you please step up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Luszcza?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Commissioner Palachek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Chatwell?
Here. Thank you. This time, I'd move an approval of the agenda. We have a motion and support. Any items to be removed, added, comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We've arrived at awards and recognition, there are none. Communications and petitions. You should have before you from Jennifer Holmer, a packet. A motion to receive, please.
Motion to receive.
We have a motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? At this time, we've arrived at special orders and public hearings. I'm going to use this time to allow Jennifer, if she'd like to address us, to take five minutes. Jennifer?
Thank you, Chair Chatwell, and thank you, other Board of Commissioners. It's nice to be here tonight on behalf of Secretary of State Johnson. She sends her greetings. She's a former Board of Commissioner and understands the leadership that you must provide in your county and appreciates your service. First, I want to acknowledge Clerk Ryska and her dedication to administering elections here in Jackson County. She is one of those clerks that we can rely on in our Bureau when we have issues, when we have problems, when we need group problem-solving and thinking of new ways of doing things. She is one of our go-to clerks, so thank you, Amanda, for all your dedication and professionalism to administering elections here in Jackson. So, you have every reason to be proud of her. First, I want to tell you about, I'm going to leave you here with three things. One, how to avoid the lines and the branches, some other things that you may not know about the Secretary and what she sees her role as in the community. But first, the big ol' avoiding the lines and the branches. I have in your packets, there are a few items that I will be referencing if you want to get those out to take a look at. First, I want you to know that our department has been cut by 25% over since 10 years ago, so that makes things a little bit tough on administering and running 131 branches in our state. We process over 55,000 transactions per day in our branches in the state of Michigan that equals about 13 million statewide. Your branch, of course, is one of 131,000 branches, but last year, you all processed here in Jackson 213,000 transactions, which is really quite a few. And I want to insert in this conversation, before I talk about more about avoiding the lines and the branches, our branch here in Jackson is unique in the sense that they view them as being part of the community. Our branch sends out staff to the prison, to your courts, to talk about how to obtain driver's licenses for incarcerated individuals, and really works as a partner in your community and works with nonprofits, so that they have adequate information as to what we do and what our services are. So, that's something that we're really proud of in the Secretary of State's office. But to reduce the lines specifically, Secretary of State Johnson launched Express SOS in October of 2011. Since then, we have conducted over 4.3 million transactions online. It's 24/7, it's convenient, and it's a win-win for everyone. She even introduced a new service that we all can sign up for, whether it's to get an email or a text message reminding us that we have our tabs due, or that there's an election in our community. So, if you want to take advantage of that to be reminded, we offer that to you. I will say in avoiding lines and the branches as well, we are very, very busy around Independence Day and around Labor Day. So, if you can conduct business with our office a little bit outside of those holiday times, you'll save time in the long run. But first, we encourage you to go online at expresssos.com. Secondly, I want to talk about what the Secretary sees her role as in the community and in the state, and this is where I'd like you to take a look at, our handout partnering with businesses. We license and oversee 9,600 auto repair facilities, which is 33,000 mechanics in the state, and 6,300 auto dealers, which, quite a few. We also license 7 million drivers in the state, and 10 million vehicles have our tabs on them. So, she came into office and she realized that in order to be a part of Michigan's comeback team, we needed to cut some red tape within that area of responsibility and regulation. But she also understood the need for protecting consumers. And on the protecting consumer side, one big initiative that she took on last July was asking the staff and all the branches on a one-day scenario to check all insurance certificates that were presented in our branches. And what we found is 16% of insurance certificates presented in one day in our branches were fraudulent. So, we are working in that effort to prevent consumers from being sold fraudulent insurance certificates and protecting the whole industry on that front. Finally, a few tidbits that you may not have known about, that she has worked on since January of 2011, and we have more handouts that I'll refer you to. One is organ donation. When Secretary of State Johnson took office, we were very low in our organ donor numbers. We had 27% of the adult population signed up on the Michigan Organ Donor Registry. The national average is 47%. She changed the policy, asked the staff to ask the question, which is, would you like to join the Michigan Organ Donor Registry at the branch? Since then, we have signed up over 1.4 million donors, and we are now at 45% of our adults on the organ donor registry here in Michigan. We have eight transplant centers in the state, we have 3,200 people waiting to live, so it really makes a big difference, and she really wants me to stress that when I'm talking to folks in Jackson. You all have 38% of your adult population on the organ donor registry. So, I'd encourage all of you to consider joining the registry, and if you're not, please go online and sign up. The governor also signed legislation for the veterans designation on the driver's license. I hope that you have heard about it. If not, if you can help us spread the word, but coming up this May, our discharged veterans may go into the branches and present their DD-214s and obtain the veterans designation on the driver's license. This is really important, as we have 680,000 veterans that reside in the state of Michigan, and they can then easy, you know, pretty easy access services versus carrying around their DD-214s or relying on any other form of identification that'll be right there on their driver's license. She's also spearheaded legislation to help veterans obtain CDLs by using their military experience, instead of running them through the normal course, because that experience is very valuable. And we want to help them gain full employment. So, anything with our realm that we have had the ability to influence and make better, we have. Finally, I'll just let you know, too, we have a library program that we set up with libraries across the state to access Express SOS. And we've also promoted our recreational passport, which has enabled, she's been a real champion of the recreational passport, because if you remember years back, our parks were not being maintained, there weren't, you know, there was not a lot of money for staff to clean it up, but to clean up individual parks. But she has promoted that, and since then, the parks now have the staff, they have the adequate funding, you know, things are clean, we're participating with the Department of Transportation and the parks and DNR to get folks from other states to capitalize on our tourism industry to help out on that front, too. Finally, you have my contact information, and I can give my contact information to anyone who's here tonight, that if you have any suggestions, comments, or feedback that you'd like me to take back to the Secretary or a specific branch, I'm more than happy to, and if you need help on any front, please let me know. I'm available by phone, by email, and would be happy to accommodate any sort of requests. Does anyone have any questions? No? Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it. And if anyone would like any state maps, so let me know.
We now have arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment are, each individual will state their name, they will have a five-minute time allotment at the beginning of the meeting, and they are limited. An individual may address the board under this public comment at the opening of the meeting, and the individual may only address the board, we will not answer questions. If you would like a question, please put it in writing and submit it to Adam Brown, the Deputy Administrator, and we will make sure you get one, an answer. We are now, public comment is now open.
Chairman Chatwell, Commissioners, Administrator Overton, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Tanya Olson, I serve as Governmental and Community Relations Director for Granger. I am also honored to serve as a representative on your Solid Waste Plan Amendment Committee. At the beginning of this year, our company acquired the assets of Northwest Refuse. We are excited about being involved in Jackson County, and we are thankful that a majority of the staff from Northwest has joined our team. We are looking forward to building on the green vision of Northwest founder Jim Swickert. I am here tonight to encourage your support to rescind Ordinance Number Six, commonly referred to as the Flow Control Ordinance. I would also like to encourage your support of Resolution 3-14.5 for inter-county solid waste disposal. The vision of the county more than 10 years ago was to utilize the Resource Recovery Facility to accomplish waste management and recycling goals. The unfortunate reality is that this system could not be sustained. Your action tonight to rescind the Flow Control Ordinance and acknowledge the waste import-export authorizations included in your county plan is a first step, a technical step, to move to a new waste management and recycling goals. This will provide greater opportunities for the responsible management of waste and recycling in the county.
Peter Bormuth, I'd like the Commissioners to vote opposed to Resolution 0314.7. This is Commissioner Duckham's proposal against a public boat launch on Lake Columbia. As I spoke to you in study session, the public trust doctrine holds all the waters, all the navigable waters in the state in the public trust and for the public. And Lake Columbia is navigable water, and this doctrine passed into law with the passage of the Northwest Ordinance, and it was a requirement that each state carved out of that Northwest territory adopt the public trust doctrine. It was first upheld by the U.S. Supreme Court in a case in 1892, Illinois Central Railroad versus the state of Illinois. And the court held that all the waters and the bottom land, under navigable waters, is held in the public trust and cannot be given away. So, the citizens at Lake Columbia own their land, they own all their land around the lake, but they do not own the water. So, basically, Commissioner Duckham is asking you, as an agency of state government, to pass a resolution opposed to venerable and prudent state law. The public trust doctrine has been expanded to include recreational activities, and we're talking about, I believe, a kayak and canoe launch. Secondly, I want to point out that Commissioner Duckham raised an issue about the county's ability to maintain it, a financial issue. But I note that on today's agenda, there is the purchase of two properties to complete the trail out there, the bike trail, for $40,000. You're actually purchasing property, and one of those properties is not even necessary, from what I understand, but the school district wouldn't sell the one that you wanted without the other one. So, you obviously should take a gift of valuable public land on Lake Columbia to support recreational and health activities. I believe that's one of the goals that you've set. I mean, it's way under economic development, but it is one of your goals in this county. And finally, I'd like to say that Commissioner Duckham had to bring this forward. He has 1,200 constituents out there who are interested in this, and they wanted him to present their anxieties to you, and that's what they are, anxieties. The citizens out there can protect their private property easily, they simply have to call the sheriff if they have someone trespassing on their private parks, and the sheriff can get there and issue a citation. As far as the fish they've stocked in the lake, once you stock fish in navigable waters, they become part of the public trust, and you no longer privately own them. But I'd also like to point out another issue here, just for the benefit and education of Mr. Duckham's constituents. I believe they failed kindergarten, or actually, I think their kindergarten teacher failed them. They did not learn how to share.
Good evening, John Wilson. If the Board of Commissioners vote to move forward with a $50,000 master plan on the fairgrounds, has each Commissioner gave it any consideration on how to pay for whatever a master plan might envision for the fairgrounds? Maybe the cost might be as low as $1 million, or maybe the master plan could call for up to $10 million in needed repairs and renovations to the fairgrounds. How to pay for the $500,000 Phase 1 of the Cascades renovation hasn't even been determined yet. But yet, some on this board believe it's okay to spend $50,000 on a master plan for the fairgrounds without even having any idea on how the results of a master plan could be paid for. Unless the county has either won a big lottery, or has had a big strike of oil on Jefferson Road, or maybe both, just how would the county pay for any renovations to the fairgrounds when this county commission hasn't figured out yet on how to pay for the $9.5 million cost for the Cascades? Knowing there isn't yet an answer on how much it could cost and what may be involved with a fairgrounds master plan, why doesn't this board just place on hold spending on a fairgrounds master plan and instead prioritize on making some definitive answers on how and if to move forward with the Cascades?
Good evening, my name's Neil Hardcastle, and I'm the principal owner of Fuseer LLC and Skybird Inc., located a few blocks away in downtown Jackson. I'm here on behalf of my company to point out some facts. I know that this is a county meeting, but my points are made on both the city and county level, where as a local marketing firm, the majority of my client base are large manufacturing companies based outside of this county. Now, my company has grown quite a bit, and the last year, it's been based here in Jackson. And one of the things that we will be approaching in the next three months is sustainability in Jackson County. We currently reach, yield a higher gross on all projects that we do outside of the county, and we continuously see the county and the city spending tens of thousands of dollars outside of the county, when they send it inside of the county that has the opportunity to tax us, tax our employees, and tax the money inside the county that our employees will spend, because they all live and work in this area. So, I just wanted to point out that we do have the capabilities and the education and the technology to create a strong marketing plan, because that's really what this fairgrounds needs, is a strong marketing plan, which compared to the Cascades' marketing, the fairgrounds has a source of revenue, where they can actually generate and pay back whatever cost it takes to get the fairgrounds up to par. Our experience expands not just inside the state, but I've actually moved a programmer from the state of Florida up here to work for me, who handles all my programming, as well as my experience traveling across the country, living out in California, studying over one of the largest real estate marketing companies in the nation. So, my goal here today is just to point out that we do have the resources. $50,000 is an outrageous price to spend on a master plan for the fairgrounds, but yet it could be feasible in the long run and justified. So, that is what I wanted to say, and thank you for your guys' time.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. At this time, we will have a special meeting of the Affairs and Agencies Committee. The tables, Dave? Okay. That'll be around Commissioner Elwell. The public is free to join that meeting, you can go and look. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the February 18th, 2014 Board of Commissioners meeting. I have a motion and support. Any corrections, deletions, or otherwise? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. Consent agenda at this time. I have a motion. I have support. Are there items to be removed from the consent agenda? Commissioner Rice?
Mr. Chairman, underneath the Human Services, 9D, CAA Policy Change.
I'll ask that item that under Consent Agenda, Item 10A, be placed, Understanding Committee Report, Human Services, and become Item 14A. Commissioner Rice?
Mr. Chairman, under Affairs and Agency, 10A, Remove Fair Master Plan.
Fair Master Plan, which is Item 9D, shall move to Item 13C, Standing Committee Report, Agencies and Affairs. Chairs of those standing committees duly note? Commissioner Elwell? Any items, any other items to be changed on the consent agenda? Seeing none? Let's use our lights to vote, please. Electronics, excuse me? It's okay. Electronics, electronics. I apologize, David. Should appear on your computer screen. Consent agenda has amended this class unanimously. We've now arrived at Item 13, Standing Committee, Agencies and Affairs, chaired by Commissioner David Elwell. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First up, we have appointments. A note that the Ag Preservation Board is still open with no applicant yet, and I believe I saw advertisements in the exponent this week for a number of positions. I don't recall that this was there, but hopefully continue to advertise it. We do have three appointments to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. The first is a Township Supervisor Rep. It's a seat occupied by Jim Dunn, he's the applicant, and he's the recommendation from
Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One City Council Rep. for the same BRA Authority, Dan Greer is a current member, applicant, and recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Elwell?
Third seat is one Consumers Energy Rep. Current member is Natalie Stopyak. The applicants are Brad Runkel, or applicant is Brad Runkel, and Brad is also the recommendation of committee.
Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Commissioner Elwell?
Economic Development Corporation, one seat, which is a City of Jackson member. The current member was Martin Griffin, the applicant is Andrew Founfelker, who's also the committee recommendation.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
FEMA Board, there's one Commissioner member, it's a vacant seat. There were no applicants that I'm aware of, and no recommendations, unless there's a nomination from the floor.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, we'll carry that forward for another month. Commissioner Elwell?
Lifeways Board, first is a Commissioner appointment. Carl Rice Jr. is the current member, the applicant, and the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Commissioner Rice. Commissioner Elwell?
Next would be also a Lifeways appointment, which is one Commissioner. The current member is Jim Chatwell, Senior. He's also the applicant and a recommendation from committee. One consumer, correct.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Commissioner Elwell?
Jackson Transportation Authority, one public member, Phil Moylanen is the current member, the applicant, and also the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Commissioner Elwell?
Veterans Affairs, we have a Korean War veteran, the current member is Robert Sales, he's also the applicant and the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Second seat for Veterans Affairs is a Vietnam veteran. It is a seat currently held by Joe Peak, he's the applicant and also the recommendation of committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Next, we have the, by way of the Administrator Controller, Resolution 03-14.6, the inter-county solid waste disposal that the committee recommends approval of.
Do I have support? Commissioner Duckham, do you have a request? Any objections from the board?
Mr. Chair, do we need to vote on that to have him abstain or not? I think we may.
That's why I was waiting to see if there's any objections first.
Okay.
Seeing nor hearing none, Commissioner Duckham has asked permission to abstain, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. The clerk registrar has posted the vote before you. Resolution passes 7-0 with one abstention. Commissioner Elwell? Commissioner Elwell. Do we have support? We have support from Commissioner Luszczyk. Any comments? Commissioner Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've already made comments during our committee process. I would like to add a couple of things here. I have reached out to people with various skills within our community. I've looked at our internal resources here at the county as well as talked to people in the public. I've asked specific questions about the public's Jackson County fairgrounds. I know the infrastructure of the fairgrounds needs analysis on electrical, environmental, planning, and other matters. I don't question we already use the fairgrounds for many events. I don't question a plan is needed. I do question using the public's year-end savings of up to fifty thousand dollars. We have county resources, outside resources, and people in our community who would be valuable assets to putting a plan together. And at this time, I'll defer to see if another commissioner has a comment.
Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At committee, I spoke in support of this plan to appropriate up to, up to fifty thousand dollars, not necessarily spend that much. Since that time, there's been at least one article in the paper, and there's been debate back and forth, and I appreciate Administrator Overton's email from a couple of days ago that clearly laid out the situation there. And we're not talking about hiring somebody to tell us where to put flowerpots. We're talking about likely utilizing a number of different engineers, some of which Commissioner Rice had mentioned, but we're talking about many things, including structural, mechanical, electrical, civil, and likely environmental engineers that need to get involved, potentially doing boring testing. Everybody knows that we sit next to the Grand River, and we have to be careful about what we're doing. So it's not just a plan of taking recommendations on what the fairgrounds should look like. It's a complicated issue that's going to take engineers. They don't work for free, that I'm aware of, and it's something that if we're going to be good stewards of the county's assets and funds, we need to be forward-looking about this and plan out what that should be at the fairgrounds structurally and otherwise. So I'll be strongly supporting this.
Commissioner Lightner.
I just want to say also, just for clarification purposes, some people I noticed on reading the comments on Live thought that this master planning is just for the fair itself. This isn't just the fair, and I think that's pretty clear now. It's for the whole grounds, and the grounds are utilized almost every single weekend for events, private events, events such as trade shows. Denise gave me a whole list of events that we have, you know, Beer Fest, Outdoor Expo, toy shows, et cetera, et cetera. And I understand that the number is hard to swallow right now, but the fair is also essentially our large, one of our largest parks in the whole county, and I think people need to remember that. And it also is a source of revenue. You know, it does have, it's an enterprise fund, obviously, we, most of us know that. But without a plan, there's grants that are available now that we cannot even apply for to help us get to where we want to be in the future. And I think that having this outdated plan is a huge disservice to our county and the people that live here and that utilize the fairgrounds and come to the fairgrounds and enjoy it. And we don't want to look ten years down the road and say, oh, well, we decided not to spend any money on making a plan. I mean, just because we're appropriating money for a plan doesn't necessarily mean we're hiring outside people to come work here. I understand that we have a broad range of talent and skill within our county that we can utilize, and that's not necessarily what we're appropriating to say, hey, we're going to hire someone from, you know, Ohio or something to come tell us what to do with our fairgrounds. I think this is going to be a collaborative effort of what we actually want our fairgrounds to be in the future. And obviously, as a Fair Board member, I'm in full support of it as well. So that's it.
Commissioner Luszczyk.
The resolution is to, is to appropriate up to fifty thousand dollars. We always get people that step forward and, to help at the fair and also to help the county in ways with engineering firms or whatever it is coming up and saying, hey, we'll give you a rate to do this. And I mean, if, there's not, there's, I don't think there's any way we're going to spend fifty thousand, but it's, and that's what the resolution says, up to. It's very needed.
Any other commissioners? Any other commissioners? We've all had our first round. We'll start second round.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I, first of all, again, I want to point this out. I do not have a problem with a plan, not at all. I don't have a problem with having a fairgrounds that's economically sound for our county. You know, if you, if you just take a look at what's happening with the airport, you take a look at what's happening with Cascades, you take a look at what's happening with Lifeways, you look at our county deficit, you know, we're looking at a challenge of right, just right there of roughly twenty-two million dollars. So for me, that certainly has to be taken into consideration because I take that very seriously, and I know this whole commission does, and we'll meet that challenge. But let me, let me point out specifically some resources I'm talking about that I believe could put a plan together. Okay, we appropriate a hundred thousand dollars a year to the enterprise group. We have a county drain commissioner that we could use. We have a facilities department that knows the ins and outs of the fairgrounds like the back of their hand. We have an MSU extension that we appropriate funds to. We have a county health department that could help us out. We have a relationship with the Conservation District. We have the Region Two Plan Commission, which we appropriate funds to. We have the Jackson County Plan Commission, which I participate on and which we, as a board, appointed. And the Jackson County Plan Commission is a very specific group of people that had to meet requirements of an ordinance for the state of Michigan, and the Jackson County Plan Commission can seek out grants. All they have, all you have to do is ask us, and we can go out and search for grants. The Plan Commission, for example, and this will be my last comments, is made up of people in the planning, industry, surveying, architect, agricultural, education, environmental, industrial, and economic interest, engineering, and we all have a vision there. So for me, I will not support appropriating funds like this, even fifty thousand dollars, with so many other county needs that we have. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Duckham.
I've sat here listening to the debate go back and forth, and I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Lightner, and I agree with many points that Commissioner Rice has made. And I initially was against spending the fifty thousand dollars on a master plan, but even if we, like Commissioner Rice has stated, could get the drain commissioner to do part of the work, and other agencies and departments of the county or people we, we provide budget for, they're going to need tools to work with. And, you know, the drain commissioner very well may, may need to do borings or excavating to study the hydrological aspects of the fairgrounds. We don't want to make a mistake and design a fairground that is very nice and we all like, but it's polluting the Grand River. And any, even anyone that donates their time to improve the fairgrounds in Jackson County, they're going to need tools to work with, and we're going to have to have a fund to draw from to give them the tools they need. So I will support up to fifty thousand dollars for the study. I can see both sides, but like I say, even if people wish to donate and help out and assist, they're going to need tools and services rendered that is going to cost money, so we need a fund to draw from. Thank you.
Commissioner Plachek.
A number of years ago, we did the City of Jackson Master Plan. I've been involved in three of those, and we did that in-house. And what we ended up with was a rubber stamp of the master plan from five years earlier. So we were working off of a ten-year plan. This year, we've gone to an outside firm. I'm on the Planning Commission with the city and on the Master Planning Commission that you all put me on. And this outside firm is looking at this in a much broader way than we would have ever been able to do internally. So I agree with the things that Commissioner Lightner has said, and I think that county fairgrounds are very important to the city of Jackson. I think you bring a lot of people into the city of Jackson that normally would not come down here, so I will be supporting this.
Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, the clerk registrar has posted it to your computers. You may vote. Chairman Elwell.
That's all I have to report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Standing Committee, Human Services chaired by Commissioner Julie Alexander. Commissioner Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On board docs in front of us on our screen, the initial screen mentions two items, one which I will point out was removed, withdrawn at the request of Community Action Agency. The youth build program has been removed from the board docs agenda. So to here today, we're here to look at approving a change in the NSP3 homebuyer policy and procedure to increase the homebuyer subsidy from the current fifteen thousand to the new rate of up to thirty thousand. That is the policy change that is being requested.
Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I cannot support increasing the homebuyer subsidy from fifteen thousand to thirty thousand dollars. The homebuyer subsidy is intended to assist potential buyers to achieve the goal of buying a home, thus increasing the sales of homes in our area and stabilizing the housing market, keeping the home values from further decline. However, I believe the housing market has already stabilized itself just by using the free-market enterprise system, and the market has worked. This viewpoint is, is supported by the fact that the Jackson County taxable home values have risen by 2.7% in the last year and have added an extra two, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the tax rolls. Please realize that not everyone wishes to own their own home. Some people are perfectly happy renting and handing the responsibility of maintaining that property off to the property owner that they're renting from. With that said, the market stabilizing, the market stabilizing buyer, the market stabilizing, with the market stabilizing, buyer subsidies are no longer needed. Thus, there should be no further need to increase the, the practice of, of stabilizing or of funding a subsidy for potential homebuyers. Up to, we shouldn't increase it up to thirty. Matter of fact, we shouldn't be doing fifteen. In closing, it's really not the function of government to hand you your down payment so you can buy a home. You start out, out of, out of school or out of college, and you buy what you can afford. That's why you're called a first-time homebuyer, and you buy your first home, an entry-level home, and you save money, you pay on your home, you allow the value to increase, you sell your home, and you go to the next level. It's America. Your, your ambition and your dreams can take you as far as you want to go, and that's up to the individual person, not the government handing out taxpayer money. It isn't even handling out taxpayer money, it's handing out borrowed money because the federal government don't have it to lend. So I won't support this. Anybody that supports this, you are just increasing the tax liability upon your children and your grandchildren because they're going to have to pay it back one day. Thank you.
Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't be supporting it either. I spoke against it prior to this, and it just seems insane to me that we, first of all, take these houses and rehabilitate them, and I don't recall the exact numbers that Toby gave us when she reported, but I think one house in particular, there had been a hundred and five thousand or at least an excess of a hundred thousand put into rehabbing it, and I believe it was sold for seventy-five thousand, if I have those numbers right or close anyway. So we're taking a twenty, twenty, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollar loss on the expenditure of taxpayer dollars to begin with, and then we're adding in a fifteen thousand dollar subsidy and potentially asking for another one. And the truth of the matter is, it is taxpayer dollars. It may not be coming directly from county coffers, but it's all of our tax dollars that have to eventually pay this borrowed money back. Even if it were not borrowed money, it would still be our tax dollars that are paying it. And I think if we looked at this like running a business, how long would we stay in business if we were operating with principles like this? We'd be out of business in a heartbeat, and I just can't see supporting it. Thank you.
Commissioner Alexander.
Thank you. NSP3 Neighborhood Stabilization Program. The big picture, in my opinion, is once we accepted this federal grant of one million one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to renovate and sell foreclosed homes, we should do everything possible to be most efficient and utilize these tax dollars to the benefit of Jackson citizens. The subsidy is protecting the home value by keeping selling prices at appraised value. This is important for neighborhood stability. It's a win for the homebuyer. It's also a win for the neighbor who goes to sell their property. Not every purchaser will need the subsidy, but we will be able to utilize the amount that's reasonable for each buyer in each situation. Thank you.
Commissioner Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned before, I made comments during our committee process, and I will add some things here tonight to clarify. I have a good understanding of the NSP3 program. I have, I've been in some of these homes that have been remodeled. I've been in, I've been through all the neighborhoods where these homes have been chosen to be part of the NSP3 program, and Ms. Berry certainly can attribute to that. I have stayed on top of this for, quite frankly, for over three years. And I've also talked to the neighbors in these neighborhoods. I also believe low-income, medium-income, business people, people of all walks of life should have opportunities to succeed. One neighborhood I visited will have four remodeled homes with an average value of a hundred thousand dollars of federal taxpayers' money for each home, so roughly four hundred of federal taxpayers' money for each home, so roughly $400,000 will be spent on these homes. Um, these homes will go from anywhere from 65, um, oh, one's 65 now, you have one for 75, um, and then there's a couple others that, uh, one is done yet, uh, and, uh, but these are the average price around 65, $75,000. To me, giving someone $30,000, again, regardless, low-income, medium-income, business people, all walks of life, that's not the issue here, but giving someone $30,000 that they don't have to pay back is not the best way to spend people's tax dollars. I assure you, the neighbors do not have homes that are worth $100,000. I assure you, they were not given $30,000 to buy their homes or fix up their homes. To me, speaking to what Commissioner Alexander had to say, this program is broken, and I won't put, uh, Ms. Berry on, on the spot, but I would almost suspect she might even think this program's broken. This program, if it was done properly, could serve so many more people, but it's just not done properly. The comments, the impact of neighborhoods, what I'm hearing from neighbors, where these homes are located, regardless of their economic class, trust me, they don't feel the stabilization.
Any other commissioner comments? The clerk has posted the vote in front of you. Three in favor, five against. The motion is defeated. Commissioner Alexander?
We have no other business to bring to the board.
Standing Committee Personnel and Finance chaired by Vice Chairman Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham?
We have no business tonight to conduct, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Unfinished business. We have any to be brought up by the board of commissioners? Seeing nor hearing none. New business. Resolution 03-14.5, Support of Partnership with Allegiance Health and the University of Michigan.
Move to support the resolution.
I have a motion, I have resolution support. Any comments from commissioners? You have to post the vote, if you would, please. Can we call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Plachek?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Chairman Shotwell?
Yes. Resolution of support was unanimous. Resolution 03-14.7, Columbus, Lake Columbia Access. Entertain a motion? We have a motion and support, we have a resolution and support. Commissioner comments? The resolution fails. 5-3?
4-4.
4-4?
Well, they're only...
4-4. The motion fails. We've arrived at public comment? Any public comment?
I would like to thank the commissioners for making a wise decision and also making a wise decision by appropriating money for the master plan for the fairgrounds. I think that airport out there is one big, huge example of a problem of not having good planning, like a $23 million problem. So thank you for appropriating $50,000 to help the fair build a wise plan for its future
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All the commissioners, my name is Chad Noble. I'm the president of the Allegiance Health Foundation, a lifelong member of our community and a proud member of a leadership team of our hospital. I'd like to personally thank you and extend the thanks of all the leadership at Allegiance Health for your support. I'd like to take just a moment and tell you a progress update of the affiliation with the University of Michigan and tell you how your support will be used and why that's important. First of all, it's important because at least three organizations are looking very carefully at this affiliation, none of whom know a great deal about our community like we do. First would be the State Attorney General's Office, second would be the Federal Trade Commission, and third would be our neighbors to Ann Arbor. This is the first major acquisition that they will be making, and they're very concerned and very, very careful about this acquisition and wanting to make sure that, uh, the community is, is supportive of it. A brief update of where we are. We're concluding the due diligence phase of sharing information about us and, uh, the University of Michigan back and forth. We're just beginning the phase of writing the definitive agreements that will actually outline what this affiliation looks like. Uh, the best-case scenario of having the, the agreements signed would probably be in the next 60 to 90 days. Uh, it's unclear to us, however, the final hurdle will probably be the Federal Trade Commission and whether they allow this to move forward, and the timing on that at this point is unknown. Again, I would like to thank you for your support, and, uh, thank you also for those of you, most of you, who have written individual letters supporting this as well.
Hi again. Um, again, my name is Neil Hardcastle, and I'm with Fuser, and I just wanted to touch a few points, um, after everybody has some time to put their input in on the, uh, new upgrades or the, uh, master plan. Everyone's input was right on, uh, but marketing, the majority of the time, is strongly misunderstood. Um, engineering and mechanical upgrades to the fairgrounds is a given. That obviously has to take place before we can really grow and expand, uh, the fairgrounds, but marketing is, uh, not just about throwing billboards up and, uh, you know, putting together cool graphics. It's a way of measuring feasibility and ROI. Uh, it's the first step in deciding whether or not the county should spend $50,000, uh, in a stronger master plan, because knowing what works in the fair industry is how we will improve and justify the next step. Uh, so marketing is the most overlooked element in a business plan because really that's what a master plan is, and, uh, you can build the greatest fairgrounds in the world, but if the marketing plan is flawed, it will never reach its potential, and that's when the community gets mad because they never see a return on their tax dollars spent when, uh, the town proposes to spend up to $50,000. Now, an effective marketing plan starts and succeeds with, or, uh, an effective master plan starts and succeeds with a strong marketing plan, so I just want to be sure that when it comes time to evaluate and whether or not it's justifiable to improve the fairgrounds, the marketing plan, and, uh, figuring out what other fairgrounds are doing across the country, what's working for them and how they're continuing to run a profit is the best place to start, not whether or not the electrical system needs to be upgraded. Again, thank you for your time.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Denise Owens. I am the Fair Operations Manager, and I just want to say thank you for your support. We, uh, have been on a forward motion for the last, uh, at least three years, and I think this is just one more way that we can solidify the fact that we have a great diamond in the rough. I've heard Mr. Overton use that, and I think that's very true, so this master plan will give us focus, and I very much look forward to getting started.
I'm Cliff Earl-Rives-Junction. I was a Fair Board member for a long time. I'm glad to see this moving forward. We had a lot of plans down there then, but we'd never had the money to do it, and I think with the county backing them now, I think they can move forward real good. There's a lot of things that needs to be done down there, and I think the county's got the sources to do it, and I think $50,000 is just a drop in the bucket for what they need to do, and I think they can find somebody to do this job a lot less than $50,000, and they can use that extra money on buildings and things like this. And I think the, I think with the people you got involved with this, I think they'll make the right decisions as they move along on this, and, uh, it's good, I see some of the plans on this is going to be moving along with the parks, and I think there's a lot of grants available there, and I go along with Sarah on that. The parks has been getting these, this money for a long time. The Fair Board's never had that decision to make that plan before. Now they can, and I take my hat off to you gentlemen for voting for that. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. Commissioner comments? Commissioner comments? Any commissioner comments? Seeing none? Well, Commissioner Leczka?
I guess as long as we have an audience here, um, a week from today is Project Red at the Fairgrounds. That's when we bring third graders from across the country, across the county, uh, over 1,400 this year, so they can learn about, uh, where their food comes from and, uh, other things. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none. I'd like to entertain a motion to discuss collective bargaining and illegal opinion in closed session. Has it, we have a motion and support. Madam Clerk, would you be so kind as to call the roll? Yes, remember, we will be coming back with one decision, so there is something afterwards if you're interested. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried? I would like to entertain a motion to resolve, be resolved to settle the case of Wharf versus Jackson County with a finding of no liability in exchange for payment of $35,000. I have a motion and support. Who moved it? Rice, supported by Leczka. All in favor? No, neither, well, hold on, do we need a roll call? Probably should. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Chair.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rice? Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Plachek?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Mr. Leitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Leczka?
Yes.
Chairman Shotwell?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Any other items come before the board? Seeing none, we are adjourned.